The first item would be our President's Executive Summary. Seeing how the President is not here, I will pass that along to the next meeting. The next item we have is our Consent Agenda. First item is the Bills. Do we have any questions on the Bills? Mr. Kethlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one question on the Bill. If we go to page, uh, 1 of 1022, and it would be the 10/11 process date. We only have one bill against the last item on the page for $199. Is that true? I mean typically, we see about $10,000 to $15,000 against this account.
Can you repeat where that is again, sir?
You're talking about the dehumidifier?
Yeah, there's no other bills against the Police Department. Typically, we see the cleaning costs and multiple other items.
Well, yeah.
That's kind of an anomaly in my mind if I've been looking at trends. I mean, I might have got...
No, there's only one.
A funny package because I get paper. And I'm not saying anybody made a mistake, but it just...
I can't see that one.
Yeah, if there is a...
There's only one bill, sir.
Only one bill for the whole Police Department for the month.
For his office supplies, yes.
So, is there...
Certainly verified, yes.
Usually either that or the next page, there's usually another Police Station bill, and there's no others. So, there's only one bill for $199. For the dehumidifier for the furniture, the... Is that for the furniture that we leased?
Is it, sir?
Thank you.
This furniture is in the trailer.
Thank you.
Okay.
I can't believe there's only $199. Well, somebody's not getting paid.
Well, there are bills every week. So, there's still on the board, there's bills prior to that, there's bills after that. So, the date they come in and get approved is when they get paid. So, if they're not approved, they're not on that 10-4 list. So, there's nothing outstanding in my inbox.
Okay. All right. Okay. I guess I find that hard to believe because at the last meeting, we had an approval through AGM or ABM or whatever, whoever they are, stated there was a 400, an 800. Hold on a second. I have it in my notes somewhere. It's after, uh... There was an $846,000, uh, $846,307 for the period ending 9/30/2018 from Bentley. We were told that that bill, in fact...
I don't have that. At that point in time, it's probably in the next run.
That was the last request for payment?
Yeah, it's like a million dollars.
Yeah, obviously. And all I can say is, I mean, we'll check it tomorrow. I don't know why it's not in this run. It was either on a previous run or it'll be on the next one.
I can't imagine the builder can afford to front the town.
Say that again, sir.
I can't believe the builder can afford to front the town, that kind of money. Keep the job on it.
Oh, I mean, if it's not in there, it's...
Understood.
It's not in there, we...
Thank you.
They'll get beta at some point. The next item is the CRMC... Oh, Ms. Pedro, sorry.
Yeah. Page three. I guess it's the... Yeah, it's the same, same run. The Keating Bill for the road paving. So, um, it lists the roads.
Excuse me, ma'am?
The Keating Bill for the road paving...
Yes.
Lists the roads. This is probably more for Mr. Rayner. And it says Shoreline Terrace has been deleted.
I'll have Brian send a note that there was a modification. He had to adjust the list. So, there was a Shoreline Terrace. I believe that was the road that was deleted, and it'll be in the Spring Paving Project.
Why was it deleted?
I'd have to go back and check. I don't remember.
And, um...
I mean, I think the reason why is because he didn't have enough money.
And the other roads, were those reclaims or were they just repairing cracks? Or what... Do you know what they did to those roads? Heidi, Frank Wallow, Mary Grant?
The Keating Roads were either repaved or reclaimed. Those are not crack concealed jobs.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe, actually, I think that's the reason why the Shoreline Terrace was deleted, as I remember now, because he needed to save some money for his crack conceal account. So, that's the reason why.
Mr. President?
And by saying deleted, it's not deleted forever. That's...
I know what you mean.
That goes to the top of the list for the next run.
Okay. For the next run?
Well, the next paving contract.
Okay. So...
And he's already reached out to the, some of the residents on that road, so they understand.
So, it'll be in the next budget or...
In the next budget.
In the next budget.
All set, Mr. President?
Yes, Scott.
Motion to receive and place on file.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six to zero.
Five, five one. Five one.
Sorry, Mr. Kethlin. All right. Off to a rocky start.
No, you're doing good.
The next item is the CRMC Cease and Desist Order, number 180146. Martin Lee and Stacy Robbins, 181 Prescott Farm. There's also, number three is another CRMC Cease and Desist Order, 180149, for Catherine and Joseph Lorenz, trustees, 200 Prospect Farm Road. Do we just have a motion?
Motion to receive and place on file.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six to zero. We're on a roll.
All right. Next item on our agenda is sitting as the License Board, Board of License Commissioners. Do we have a motion to open or continue the public hearing?
Continue the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, the first item here is that public hearing is a transfer of a Class B V alcoholic beverage
Good evening. Danielle Dufault from Adler Pollock and Sheen on behalf of the applicant Velocity NBC, TNBC Beach Club LLC. So, we were, discussed with the chief prior to the meeting this evening, and we would ask the council if it would be possible to continue the hearing until November 26. I understand from speaking with the town clerk that it's a possibility because of elections and everything surrounding those, that it might be better for the council if we postpone or continue until December 10th, I believe it is? And we would be comfortable with that if that worked better for the council?
December 10th?
It can either be whichever date you want, Mr. President.
We would, we'd prefer the 26th, but understand that we don't want to come the 26th and have the festivities have to ask, we have to ask for another continuance, so it's up to the council.
No, that shouldn't be a problem. We could, we'll conduct regular business on the 26th.
Perfect.
Mr. President, may I ask a question of our council listener? Is there any procedural reason, or is there any difference between granting a continuance and denying this application and having them reapply? Is there any reason to choose one procedure over the other?
It would be more efficient to continue it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, we'll continue the...
Motion to continue, date certain, November 26th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, was that for...
That would be for all...
That would be for all the licenses. I guess I need to amend that.
If it would, that would be great, yes. And I just wanted to, so, our application is complete. We handed in the tax letter of good standing tonight. So, the application is complete and will just be pending, it's my understanding, until the 26th.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All set. We'll see you on the...
So, we have to, we have to make sure we know it's the hearing and the licenses? I missed that. Sorry about that one.
Just for purposes of clarification, the advertising and are we, last time, when the continuance was for a month, when the chief asked for the continuance, I'm assuming we fall under these same advertising. We don't need to re-advertise with work? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
As Board of Licenses.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Six to zero. All right. So, now we're gonna move on to a hearing for the annual license renewals. Do we need a motion to...
Do we need a motion to open? We need, we need to know, can we do them as a block? Do we have to do them each individual? Which way would you like this?
So, liquor licenses, we do need to do individually, which is 1A, numbers two through eight, you can do them in a block.
All right.
So, it's Class A liquor licenses. Alvin's Vine and Beer, Inc., you can do a 01 East Main Road. Ferraris Package Store, Inc., 1965 East Main Road. Vazanikoff, Inc., DBA Portsmouth Liquors, 1557 West Main Road. The Class BH and BT, Roger Williams University, 144 Anthony Road. Class BV, Fieldstones LLC, 980 East Main Road. Smith Harbor House LLC, DBA, 15 Point Road, 15 Point Road. Green Valley Country Club, Inc., 371 Moon Street. Those Crazy Kids LLC, DBA, Development Street Bar and Grill, 1 Moon Road. KW Nelson, Inc., DBA, Park Avenue Pub, 506 Park Avenue. Oceanside Enterprises LLC, DBA, Public House, Portland Public House, 600 Power Square. Rockwell's Little Italy LLC, 880 East Main Road. Trentley's Bar and Grill, 514 Park Avenue. Class D, Montauk Country Club, 500 Anthony Road. Portsmouth Portuguese American Citizens Club, 35 Power Street.
And you want a, you want a motion for each one of them or by group?
You can do it by group if you like.
Ms. Pedro?
By class.
By class.
Move to approve the three Class A licenses.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Do you have a question?
Just point of order. I'm just wondering why we adjourned as the Board of Licenses. I'm, I, I thought we were just supposed to adjourn from the public hearing for the...
Maybe we did that wrong.
For the Newport Beach Club. I'm not sure.
I think it was correct.
So, we have to...
So, we have to undo that?
I think you have to undo something.
So, we need a...
Move to reconsider that, the adjournment of the licenses.
Move to reconsider the adjournment from the Board of Licenses?
Motion been made in second to reconsider that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're, we're still, we're still the Board of Licenses?
So, we're still Board of Licenses? They're passed?
Remove to continue the public hearing to...
Correct.
That's...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, we're back on track.
Yeah.
We're back on track. Back to our Class A liquor license.
Move to approve the three Class A liquor licenses.
Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the three Class A liquor licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six to nothing. Thank you. Next.
Motion to approve Class BH, BT license?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Move to approve the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 Class BV licenses?
Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the eight Class BV licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
And move to approve the two Class D liquor licenses?
Second.
Motion been made in second?
Mr. President?
Oh, yes.
I will be recusing myself from the, hold on, the Montauk, approving the PA Club Class D license.
Actually, I think I need to recuse myself from, I'm just, I just became a member of the Portuguese American Club, so I have to...
You have to refuse yourself.
I have to recuse myself on that one.
You're a financial...
Yeah.
Well, we now have recusal forms in all of our drawers.
Okay. I gotta recuse myself on that one and Mr. Gleason as well, so...
Could you just do them individual?
Yeah, so for the, for the Montauk?
Yeah, we're gonna change the motion?
Yeah.
So, I'll reverse my second? And you have to reverse the motion?
Move to reverse the motion to approve the two Class D liquor licenses.
All right, so...
Motion to approve a Class D liquor license for Montauk Country Club?
Second.
Motion been made in second for the Montauk Country Club. All those in favor?
Aye.
One recusal.
And one recusal, so the motion...
Five, zero, one.
Yeah, five, zero, one.
And then move to approve the Class D liquor license for the Portuguese American Citizens Club?
Second.
Motion been made in second for the Portuguese American Citizens Club. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one recusal. So, five, zero, one. All right. Next.
Move to approve the Sunday sales license. We're gonna do other ones?
I think she has to...
So, this is a Sunday sales liquor license, correct?
These are all annual renewals. So, the Sunday liquor license is just to be open on Sundays? It's not for the liquor license you already approved? Just approved the liquor license?
So, my next question would be, other people have Sunday sales licenses? Are they going to... Or they call those holiday?
Those are for different times.
Those are not liquor, yeah.
Those are at different times.
Okay.
Shouldn't I think the town clerk has to read them?
We don't, if you vote to read them on the liquor license, it's not a lot of...
Okay.
It just doesn't, it doesn't feel right because there's a bunch of other businesses that are opened in the way this is written. It doesn't say Sunday sales liquor. So, how do you define that different than Walgreens at the bottom of the hill?
Walgreens, if they're continuing on, it's part of their license. But Sunday sales is particular to liquor stores.
Okay.
Unless that's where they're open.
Right.
Thank you for...
We're not reading the holidays yet.
Well, I didn't think Sunday was a holiday. Not at my house, but...
Actually, they're reading the holidays at this point. They used to be called Sunday sales, and then when stores were allowed to be open on Sundays, they changed it to holiday license, so that those stores can be open on a holiday.
I feel much comfortable. Motion to approve the Sunday sale licenses?
Second.
Quantity of three?
Motion's been made in second for the Sunday sales licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. So, now, on the next one, if we, if we do it as a block, can we just pull out the Portsmouth Portuguese American Club? That way...
And Montauk.
And Montauk. Sorry, hey. We recuse on one, we recuse on all.
That's right.
There's Montauk. Okay. So, if we can, we could do the block minus those two.
Move to approve the Victorias licenses, with the exception of Montauk Country Club and Portsmouth Portuguese American Citizens Club?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And then, we just need...
Move to approve the Victorias license for Montauk.
Second.
Motion been made in second for Victorias license for Montauk Country Club. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recused. So, it's five, zero, one.
Move to approve the Victorias license for the Portuguese, Portsmouth Portuguese American Citizens Club?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second for the Portsmouth Portuguese American Citizens Club. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one recusal. Five, zero, and one. Thank you. Next, we'll do the amusement games.
Motion to approve amusement games?
Second.
Quantity of one.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next is our gunsmith and gun dealers.
Motion to approve gunsmith and gun dealers?
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero. Next is our gunsmith and gun dealers.
Motion to approve gunsmith and gun dealers?
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero. Next item is our private detectives.
Motion to approve private detectives?
Second.
Motion been made in second for the private detectives. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero.
I'm out on this one.
Okay. And then, for all of them?
Walgreens Eastern Company.
I will make a motion to approve all of them except for Walgreens. Yes, except for Walgreens.
Second.
Motion's been made in second with the exception of the Walgreens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, the motion passes five, zero, and one. And then, we need one for Walgreens.
Move to approve the holiday license for Walgreens Eastern Company.
Oh, hold on.
So, on that one, because you skipped Walgreens, it could be, it could be six, zero. You would have to recuse on that one. It's the next one you're...
Oh, that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six, zero. Yeah. Sorry about that. Mr. Kethlin? Next is the Walgreens.
Move to approve the holiday license for Walgreens Eastern Company, given business is ready.
Second.
Motion been made in second for the Walgreens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one recusal. Five, zero, and one.
Okay. Motion to approve peddler's license?
Second.
Motion been made in second for the peddler's license. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Motion to continue the hearing until Tuesday, November 13th, 2018?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made in second to continue to Tuesday, November 13th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero. All right.
Tax vouchers.
Tax vouchers.
Do we have to adjourn?
No, we continue.
Continue. Yep. So, tax vouchers, so, could we have a motion to approve tax vouchers 2018-1022-01 through
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the tax vouchers. All those in favor? Oh.
Go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So, the motion passes five, zero, with one abstentions paper. Thank you. On to our Town Administrator's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. You're probably most aware by now that Prudence Island has a boil water advisory issued by the Rhode Island Department of Health. It was issued earlier this month after E. coli bacteria was found in a storage tank water sample taken by the Prudence Island Water District. The results of the latest sample should be ready by the end of the week. We are distributing limited quantities of bottled water in an effort to ease the burden, and we hope that the latest test results will allow the lifting of the advisory by the weekend. A film crew from HGTV will be in Portsmouth, November 16th through the 18th, to film an episode of Beach Hunters. For the majority of the time, they will be on private property filming home tours. However, they will also film segments featuring our town, but they will not film anyone without their written permission. On October 16th, the Recovery Coordinator of the Rhode Island Emergency Management Association hosted a training program related to disaster recovery at the Middletown Fire Department. The training included a review of the state recovery plan, best practices for damage assessments, new procedures for FEMA public assistance, mitigation programs to aid in recovery, and local recovery roles, and planning. The training was attended by our EMA Director and key staff personnel. On Saturday, October 13th, the Portsmouth Fire Department conducted their annual open house. We had approximately 100 visitors to attend the event, where staff members provided tours of the station and our equipment. They conducted discussion and demonstrations on services provided to the community, showcased emergency medical equipment and how to use some of our advanced life support tools, demonstrated protective clothing, provided information on carbon monoxide detection, home evacuation plans, and this year's Look, Listen, and Learn Fire Can Happen Anywhere campaign. And they allowed the public to operate a charged hose line. The Portsmouth EMA staff and volunteers also opened the Emergency Operations Center and gave tours and information about the Portsmouth EMA operation. An informal Equidnic Island Town Managers' Meeting was scheduled for last Friday and had to be postponed. We conduct these meetings semi-regularly to discuss areas of mutual concern and benefit, and we hope to reschedule this soon, and I'll keep the council informed of any initiatives that we pursue. I'll be on vacation starting tomorrow, and will return to the office on November 6th. Police Chief Tom Lee will be acting in my absence. With regard to the police construction project, the project is approximately 73 percent complete. Rough mechanical and electrical work is still underway, and rough plumbing work is complete. Installation of windows and doors has started, and the contractor anticipates the window installation to be complete by the end of the week. Installation of the elevator, underground utilities, sheet rock, and gas lines started this week, and installation of water utilities will begin next week. No new applications of payment have been received since the last report, so the budget status is unchanged. Our owner's rep will be present at the next council meeting to deliver his report. And then, lastly, we received word late last week that Rhode Island DOT will be paving East Main Road from Turnpike all the way to Boyd's Lane from November 4th through November 8th. As a matter of fact, I believe they've already started milling the road. They will be doing the work at night to mitigate the effects on local businesses, commuters, and school buses, and they hope to have the traffic lights completed at Park Avenue to open that intersection upright, open up, right around the same time. So this project is, that's at the end of the paving and the light installation. This will wrap up the Route 138 project. And that concludes my report. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
Have a question, please.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rayner, has there been, has it been any more discussion about the, that ventilation system on the, on the police station?
The architect is supposed to give a, an update as to what his remediation will be at the meeting on Wednesday morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any, do we know how the, for some of the summer residential, things are contaminated with E. coli?
Yes. On Prudence Island, they're not required to have backflow preventers, and apparently what has happened, people blew their, summer residents blew their potable water mains down with compressed air, which forced the water back into the storage tank. That's, it's a continuing problem, and it's on my top of my list to discuss with Mr. Bob Marshall, the, the chair, the head of the Prudence Island Water District. Obviously, this is a problem they've had for many, many years. It's the first time it's cropped up during my tenure. He, his hair is on fire right now. He's got a lot of problems to deal with. We took a sample Thursday, Thursday, Sunday, and yesterday. Thursday, Sun, sample came back, we just have this verbal right now, is clean, so we have no reason to believe that the next two samples won't be clean. As soon as we get the results of the third sample, we have to have three clean samples. They'll lift the advisory, and then we'll shift focus to how we prevent this in the future.
Just one other, one other thing.
Yes.
I attended the Fire Department Open House, and Fire Marshal Leither, I thought he did an excellent job of trying to do a nice recovery in the, in the barn. I'd like to see him do it again. It was pretty spectacular. He did it twice while I was there. I thought that was great.
I'll pass that on. Thank you.
It's Fire Marshal Bill.
Some of us that remember that.
Okay. On to resignations and reappointments. We have an appointment to the Aquinic Island Planning Commission for Ms. Kate Wilson.
Motion to appoint.
Motion been made in second to reappoint Kate Wilson to the Aquinic Island Planning Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So it's, motion passes five, two, one. Mr. Kessin. Thank you.
The reason I, the reason I wanted to raise my hand and basically state it before I, before I showed the vote was I don't believe we should be putting people on a 501(c)(1) organization, appointing orbiters from the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessin. On to old business, monthly finance reports. Ms. Mills?
Hello. Honorable counsel attaches the budget update for September 2018. This update represents 25 percent of the current fiscal year. Overall revenues are currently at 29 percent, same as last year. Expenditures are 25 percent of the budget projection, same as last year. There are no significant wire or ACH transfers to report.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Motion been made to receive and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Now, we're going to go on to new business. New business number one is a request for sponsorship for the Portsmouth Public Education Foundation's Fall Social Fundraiser on November 3rd. Is there anyone?
Mr. President, I believe that in the past, it's come out of the contingency. Do that, they're looking for?
Came out of the council budget.
Contingency for the council?
Yes.
Do you know, do you remember the amount?
You have $1,000 in that account.
Do you know? Do you have the amount?
Do you remember the amount that we?
Five hundred.
So motion to use $500 out of the council contingency?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to commit $500 from the council contingency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And, Mr. Rayner, I think moving so for next year's budget, because this is similar to some of the other ones that we do for, like, post-crowd. Is this something we could try to work into next year's budget as a line item?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. On to the next item. It's a request, a five-year approval of Glen Farm Special Events Field. Is, we have a, we have a package here from Ms. Burke. Is there any one here?
So the only question I have is the recycling contract that was submitted to the application. The negro for recycling, I don't think exists. And the second thing is the contract that was submitted expired in February 15th, 2017. I don't know whether that's a requirement as part of the application, that that contract be in place. If so, I don't support this motion, other than to continue it to the next meeting.
I, I also had a couple of questions on the, on the application, so I think it might be best to continue it and either have our rec. director here or Mr. Huggins here.
Yeah. I mean, I talked to her at length about this. My personal recommendation is that this not get approved for two reasons. One, it's locking the council into a five-year approval, even though he says no, but I think that's, that's an awful long time to be locking in those fields. But two, more importantly, he's quoted the $100 per day charge, but yet he wants to use the fields, and that's not the appropriate fee for a fields plural. That is for a single field.
Yeah.
So I don't believe that this should be approved. At the very least, it should be corrected and continued.
So you want to continue it so the correction can happen?
I would recommend it.
By staff?
Correct.
So motion to continue to, what's your pleasure on the dates, ladies and gentlemen? November 13th or the 26th?
Would it be staff have added the time to do the necessary correction?
By the next council.
So it would be November, November 13th?
Would it make more sense to deny the application and allow them to resubmit with more, fuller information? Because it's not really a staff task, is it? Because we're?
We would work the corrections with him, so I mean, either, either way, we'll get the same result.
I got one more question, Mr. President.
Sure.
Is this a special rate? Because this is a fairly sizable event. Was the rate, is, is the rate contingent on Portsmouth residents?
No. The rate is, if you're, if you're renting more than one field, it's $850 a day vice, if you're renting one field, $100 a day. And obviously, he's been doing this for years, and then he transitioned to, I believe, Penfield School, and now he wants to, or St. George, and now he wants to come back to Portsmouth, but I think he's using old data here.
In, in the 2010, 2012 timeframe, we didn't charge him for the fields, as I remember, and try to go back over my data.
There was a time when he, when he advertised that it was for Portsmouth children, but if you go to his website now, he's got children from all over the country coming to this camp.
Correct. And, and at that point, I think we had a check in, in the vicinity of four digits.
That I would have to research.
For the event, but I think we returned that check also.
I would have to do some research.
I think we ever cashed it, so you'd have to go back and look at other people's notes who don't exist here anymore.
But I'm sure it's all on file. We can take a look.
And that's, that's fine if we can continue it, and, and, Mr. Rayner, if we could work to get those, those fees adjusted accordingly.
Correct.
I mean, that was probably, I think, my biggest concern, looking at it.
The duration of the contract.
Well, the five-year duration is something that, is something we probably also want to discuss. I know they, they want to try to reserve a certain timeframe. We've done that in the past, I believe, with, like, Beast of the East and some of those tournament folks. I don't know about locking it in for five years, but maybe we could do something in a two-to-three-year range, just so they could do that for planning purposes, but I, I think more importantly, it would be in our best interest to get the fees squared away.
So it's a, it's a five-day event?
No, it's, it's a, it's a camp. It goes on, I think he has the dates listed, but it's.
Right, but it's five days at every interval?
Yeah. Five days in every event, yeah.
So it would be five times the 850?
Five times the 850.
Well, it could be depending on the number of participants, based on the.
The fields are the fields when you lend them out. I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna earmark all the fields and then?
Well, I think in the past, they used multiple fields, so depending on what they do, it's based on the number of participants, and so when you quoted the 850 a day, that was for all, that's full facility, up to 300 participants. So you don't really know how many participants will be out there, and I think his application also indicated he needed parking, so there's a separate fee also for the parking facilities. So those are the things. We just want to make sure we factored it all in and, and we don't shortchange ourselves. That's all.
So I made a motion, never got a second, Mr. President?
Second.
I believe we had a motion and a second to continue this to our meeting of November 13th.
13th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion passes six to zero. And then the third item is a request to have our annual license renewals excluding liquor and additional hours put on a consent agenda. Ms. Watt?
Both Middletown and Newport take any of their annual renewals, and they put it on the consent agenda as opposed to the way we've got it set up right now. So with regards to the consent agenda, everything is supposed to be all selected together and voted on together, and if anybody has any discussion or wants anything to vote out, they do that prior to the start of the consent agenda. So for instance, tonight, we would have pulled Montauk out prior to.
Okay.
Listening to the consent agenda.
Mr. Kessin?
Thank you. So educate me one more time. If we have violations that the police and/or fire, they would have to be on, they would pull that out prior to it also?
So the consent would only be for the ones that are free and clear?
And, and, so how would they know prior to the agenda being published?
They would, they would be, the police notify us if there was any, any issues. We, we do put this up, everybody would have access still to all of the.
But I, but I don't have, but I don't have, I don't have a chief, fire chief here tonight if there was an issue with one of these places in a violation. How, I'm just, if somebody isn't here, I mean, Chief Lee's here, he could complain, we would hear it?
He, he would, he would look at that ahead of time, and he would put in the letter if he, if he had any incentive to adopt it.
So we have time to do our due diligence on each application?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzmaurice?
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmaurice, 50 Kristen Court, a quick question.
Sure.
If one of the citizens is sitting here and they came to read, or they read the agenda and they came here to speak to something, object or support one of these license decisions, how would that be handled by the council if it's in the consent agenda?
They have to.
Now, if they come here, they read the agenda, they come here and they want to object or support, how would that happen? If it's in the consent agenda, it looks like it's out of reach.
That's not true. Because you can pull it from the consent agenda for discussion at the, at the meeting that.
But only as you, before you begin discussion, is, is the remark I heard.
So if, if it were on the consent agenda, we would have to ask if there were any public comments prior to taking action on the consent agenda?
I like that. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna have to write that down.
That's a requirement. That was, that was pretty shining.
Hey, I have my moments. All right. So moving on now to just correspondence.
No, we didn't take an action.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. See that, Mr. Fitzmaurice?
You win some, you lose some.
One step forward, one step back. So, back to the request. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
We did.
We did.
I thought we did.
Move to the, the consent agenda with the addition that a request for commentary on the public, issue, publicly be issued during the session prior to discussion.
It's a public?
That sound good?
Would have to be a public announcement or a request, right?
Right, right. And so it happened during the meeting, but before we discuss the consent agenda.
So if it were on the consent agenda, we would have to ask if there were any public comments before we voted?
Say, next, next item is the consent agenda. I would like to ask if there, if there are any public commentary, any, any items on the consent agenda.
I hate to ask this, but if that's, would you do that ordinarily to a consent agenda item? Doesn't it have to be addressed at the next meeting? Can it be addressed at the same meeting?
I think it can be pulled at the same meeting. Just like, like, okay, now we have the consent agenda. Does any council want anything removed?
Right.
Okay, no. Does anyone in the public have any specific ones they want?
Typically, on the consent agenda, it's only been bills and, and only the council's been asking, so it's just weird that we're now moving one step further in my.
Also, you've typically been having a consent agenda and voting on them individually, which defeats the whole purpose of, but, so the whole point is that they're routine, routine matters that, that in anticipation are expected to not generate any discussion or, or something that can be approved.
But when it, when it's on the, in correspondence and you pull it out, it's always on to the next agenda. But if it's in, on the consent agenda, it can go into new business or?
Because it's a consent agenda, if it's removed from the consent agenda, it gets on the regular.
Agenda.
It does not go to the next meeting. Correspondents are listed as strictly correspondents to be received, so if it's, if it's removed, then it has to go to the next agenda.
Okay. So you had a question, you know, if you had a question on Montauk?
Yep.
Prior to, you could ask, you know, if anybody had any questions on anything before you started going to the consent agenda. Mr. Wilson has, has a concern, and I would like to pull this out.
Okay.
For discussion. Then you can vote on the rest of the, the consent agenda, and then vote, have the discussion on whatever, and then vote.
We'd also have to open it up to the, to the public?
Yes.
As well? Is that?
But that discussion has to be during a hearing?
Somehow, it doesn't seem as simple as it feels, feels on, on the agenda.
No, I know. I know. I'm with you.
I'd almost like to continue this after understanding how it went with no backup to the next meeting, but we already started a motion.
Well, no, I mean, why don't we just withdraw the motion and table it for further discussion just so that we can at least vet the process and, and make sure that it's, that it's acceptable? And if it is, we'll take action on it at the next meeting.
I like the penance these charts.
And maybe list, list what we discussed in the backup next time, so that we have some background, because we don't know if we'll be here.
On the 13th? We'll be here on the 13th.
We'll be here on the 13th?
Yeah.
Somebody.
The swearing-in will be on the 13th, won't it? No?
No. December, December.
Yeah.
December, the first meeting in December.
It'll, it'll either be the last meeting in November, first meeting, last, last time around, we thought it was going to be the first meeting in December, and then all of a sudden, it said, oh, it's confirmed, so we, we did it the last meeting in November.
Right. I'm gonna roll the dice.
Okay.
We'll be here for the first meeting.
All right. So motion to table this item till next meeting?
Second.
I must have to withdraw my motion first.
Oh, okay.
I don't think you got a second, though, did you? You didn't get a second?
You didn't get a second?
We didn't get a second, so we're just, a motion to table it to our meeting on the 13th. We have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion passes six to zero. All right. Now I can get back to where I've gotten ahead of myself. Correspondence. We have, on the correspondence, we have a letter from Clean Ocean Access, their quarterly report. We also have a letter of appreciation from the Seawall Work in Common Fence Point, a letter from invitation to Newport County branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, the 98th Annual Awards Dinner. We have a public notice of proposed rulemaking from Rhode Island Coastal Resources Management Program for the Aquinic Island Sand, and we have a public notice of proposed rulemaking, again, RI Coastal Resources Management Program, the Metro Bay Sand. Could we have a motion to receive and place on file?
Some, some more second.
Motion been made in second.
I have a question. I just want to pull correspondence, too, just for discussion right now.
Okay.
Um, I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Rayner.
On the letter.
Sure. Um, so for the Seawall, what actually happened with this? Because the council, I don't believe, wasn't, either, either that or I missed the meeting where the council was informed about it.
So is that gonna get discussed at the next meeting?
No, but we can discuss it right now. It's my understanding that we can pull correspondence items and discuss them, but we can't vote on them. Okay. So I would like to do that.
Yeah, this was, there were a few nor'easters last year.